The May 23rd, 2023 regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:07 PM. Pastor David Manila will do the invocation today. Okay, and we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Muhammad Awadala, please. Can all the, uh, we'll do the invocation today first, thank you.
If you would, bow your heads, Father God, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for all the people here and all the people that are represented in their families and their friends. Lord, we ask a blessing on everyone today. We want to say thank you for all the good that happens in our city and our country. There's some bad, Father, but we want to thank you especially for the good and pray for the city council today and all those people that are connected to it, all the people who work in the city. We ask a special blessing on them, give them wisdom. These are tough times and these are tough decisions they often have to make and you've asked us to pray for them. So, we want to take this moment out, all of us who are into praying, and ask a blessing, a special, special blessing on this council and our city for the next year. So bless us, we pray, and I ask these things in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. All the veterans, please stand up. Let's recognize all the veterans, give them a round of applause for their service.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I hope everyone's doing well today, thank you for being here. Madam Clerk, can you please read the roll call, please?
Councilmember Manning, Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson, Mayor Protem Reyes English.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Here.
All present except Councilmember Manning and Councilmember Patterson.
And those were excused just for the note that they called in anticipation, so, thank you. So, today, do we have the oral communication before the fireworks selection? Or do we continue as is? Okay, let's just move ahead with the fireworks drawing. Shannon McMurray is in the audience, where is she? Just come on up. So, there's no particular script for her. So what she's gonna do is collect six, how many participants?
Um, this year we only have six.
Okay, so there's six participants. She has the names that she's going to put in there for each one of them, so go ahead. You have the microphone right there. Can I see that?
Okay, there's Delair Baptist Church, Hawthorne LAX, Lennox Rotary Club, District 37 Little League Baseball.
To the chair.
Yes.
Just what the young ladies are doing over there, they're putting the name of those individuals that's going to pick up the location. Yeah, because all the three veterans group already have first, second, and third, and then only the other three, they're gonna pick up the location, they're going to be selling fireworks.
And the first one is Delair Baptist Church. Number two is District 37 Little League Baseball. And number three is Hawthorne LAX Lennox Rotary Club.
How many spaces are there for this drawing, for this drawing we just had? You pulled out three so far, huh? Alright, thank you. Alright. Congratulations, guys, hopefully you guys be able to make good money for your nonprofits. Okay, let's give them a round of applause.
We will meet you guys outside to pick your lots. Thank you.
How many, how many do we get out normally, eight?
Eight. Alright, guys, so, let's proceed. We also have City Manager Norris, we're doing a presentation, item number two.
Good evening, Council, tonight I'd like to introduce our engineering consultant, Kimberly Horn and Associates. They will present a presentation on SB 743. Please approach the podium, please, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Michael Schmidt, I'm with Kimberly Horn and Associates. This is Laura Furnish with Kimberly Horn and Associates as well. So, just got a little bit of an overview for your draft SB 743 policy. I'm gonna spend a few minutes just talking a little bit about it and give a little bit of background. So first, I'm gonna start off by telling a little bit about the history of level of service, which is different than the VMT we're gonna talk about today. Then I'm gonna talk a little bit about the thresholds that have been recommended. I'm gonna give a little history on SB 743, and then I'm gonna introduce a tool that's been developed to help make it easier to do analysis within the city of Hawthorne. So first, I want to start with just telling a little bit, talk a little bit about definitions. So, many folks have heard of level of service. It's the way we've been evaluating traffic for about the last 70 years in the United States. And really what it is, is we evaluate the impact to the driver. So if you think about, you come to an intersection and you have to wait some amount of time, we assign a letter grade to that and say, okay, well, you've had to wait a long time or you've had to wait a little bit of time. And in the example on the board, you'll see that we've said, after 45 seconds, that's level of service D. Well, now the state's mandating that we're gonna take a look at VMT. And VMT is where we're looking at the amount of distance that cars travel. So if you look at the example on the screen, we've got four vehicles. They travel 30 miles, that's 120 VMT. So that's just a couple of definitions so we can kind of dive into what this SB 743 policy is about. So just a little bit more about level of service. As I said, it's been the way we've made decision-making in the United States for transportation infrastructure for the last 70 years. Unfortunately, after 70 years of experience, it hasn't always been a panacea. We've had some instances where it's caused urban sprawl. It's had some impacts to active transportation. If you think about it, a lot of times our solutions for transportation impacts are, we make intersections bigger. We widen them, and that's not friendly towards pedestrians or bicyclists. And then there's this phenomenon of induced demand. I think everyone's familiar with the idea that when you build a freeway, it seems like it gets backfilled very quickly, and so we realized as we widen roadways, it's hard to keep up with it. So in part, the response to that, the state's mandated a new way to look at SEQA through this lens of VMT. And so, what it basically is, is we have to change the way we're evaluating significant impacts when we do environmental analysis. And so, the basis for a transportation significant impact is no longer level of service, the way we've been doing it for a long time. It's now this vehicle miles traveled. And SB 743 really seeks to promote denser infill development, reduce single occupancy vehicles, and then promote mass transit. So a lot of the things the state's trying to promote. It's been state law since July 1st of 2020, so any new project, whether it be transportation or a land development project, has to be evaluated through this lens. And as I said, VMT is the principal metric we use for evaluating that. Now, anytime you're doing environmental analysis, there's a threshold or a level, we say there's a significant impact. And these just highlight what the state has suggested be used as the basis for that, and they are the basis that the draft policy in front of you tonight has been based on. And I just want to make the point that they're pretty rigorous. If you think about it, they kind of say for residential, if a new residential development project comes in, if we take about the VMT that's in it, it needs to be 15% below the average. Similar with an employment project, a new office comes in, we need to be 15% below that average. So, the threshold for significance for transportation is pretty low now compared to where it used to be. And if you don't want to follow the state's policy, we have to provide substantial evidence. But that's not the case because the draft policy, as I said, follows very closely the state's recommended practice. This just quickly shows you what those numbers are that are included in there. I won't go through them line by line, but I just want to make the point that we do evaluate these. Like example, residential would now be 11 miles or 11.9 VMT per capita. So we measure those types of things when a new project comes in. An office has a different number, and retail has a different way of approaching it. Just in terms of analysis steps, the draft policy has a process. So if somebody comes as a new applicant for a new project, they can go through this process where we work through them with their land uses and evaluate them. We take a look at, there are some situations where, based on the face of the facts, we don't have to do a detailed analysis. We identify the threshold of significance, and then they do their analysis. And then after they've done their analysis, if it's needed, as were required under SEQA, there's mitigation. One of the things that's been included in the policy is a really kind of simple tool. And this is just some screenshots from the tool, but the idea is, you can go in, pick this parcel that's maybe being developed, put the information in about the land use, and then you can test different mitigation measures, and it gives all of the details very easy. So it takes what would often be, you know, a couple of weeks' worth of work and condenses it down to literally just a few minutes' worth of analysis for a smaller project. So it makes it very easy to do this type of work. And before I kind of close out, I just want to highlight the mitigations are a little bit different with VMT. You know, when you think about, like I said, with level of service, we're used to things like widening intersections. We're used to building, putting new traffic signals in. And it's not the types of mitigations or solutions we come up with for VMT. If we're trying to reduce the number of miles that folks travel, we have different things like trip reduction programs, or subsidizing transit passes, or things like that. So different measures that employers can implement to try to get folks to like, reduce the amount of driving they're doing. And so just on the heels of that, the staff recommends the adoption of the resolution related to it, and I think we'll be taking the questions later, but just wanted, we will be available if there's questions about the policy or the program.
Thank you very much, sir. Human Resources Director Lampkin, please proceed with our third presentation, Employee of the Month.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilmember Montero. I am Erica, Director of Human Resources, and I'm going to present to you the nominees for the April Good Neighbor Award. Will the nominees, when I call your name, please stand? Oscar Lugo. Okay, after each name is called, I'll read some of the highlights of why they are here tonight. So Oscar is from the Planning and Community Development Department, and he is a code enforcement officer. Oscar is a leader and a role model for the code enforcement staff. Oscar goes above and beyond expectations to assist a resident getting help with a mold problem in their apartment. Although many landlord-tenant disputes are outside of the scope of the code enforcement, Oscar visited the apartment to witness the problems and work with the management company to address the mold and other issues he saw. Code enforcement is usually unpopular because of the nature of the role as of enforcers of the municipal code. Most people, however, are willing to comply with regulations if they're treated kindly and with respect. Oscar is exemplary in this way. Oscar is consistently effective in the primary duty of code enforcement officers, which is gaining compliance from violators. Excuse me, in the past two months, code enforcement interactions have resulted in three written compliments and only one complaint. Oscar can be traced back to all of the compliments by his actions or training newer employees. Our next nominee is Alma Espinosa. Okay. Alma is from the Police Department. Alma truly exemplifies the one, or excuse me, the core values detailed for this recognition. Alma started at the Hawthorne Police Department in October of 2017. Alma immediately took on all the responsibilities of the jailer position and quickly excelled. Alma has become an intricate part of the jail operations and has sustained that effort. She has an amazing attitude and an infectious smile that is always on display. In true Hawthorne PD fashion, Alma has not only been impactful in the jail, she without hesitation steps in to fill other roles around the station when needed. Not only does Alma go out of her way to show empathy, compassion, and assertiveness to successfully manage inmates in the jail, she goes out of her way to make sure her coworkers are taken care of as well. Our next nominee is Paul Wu. Paul is from the Building and Safety Department. Paul is an associate engineer for the Building and Safety Department, and he has an exceptional work ethic and is always willing to take on new tasks. Paul has a significant impact on the department as he reviews building plans and specifications to ensure they comply with all relevant codes, regulations, and standards. Paul consistently provides high-quality work and is able to do so quickly and efficiently, which makes him stand out. He takes initiatives and comes up with innovative ideas to assist customers in reaching compliance with their building codes. Robert Daniels. Okay. Robert is in the Public Works Department, and he is a senior sewer technician, and he is currently acting as a crew leader. He demonstrates strong leadership skills. He has a deep understanding of operations, policies, and procedures. He has a positive and productive work environment, or he creates a positive work environment. He is valuable asset to the Street Division. Robert is willing to take on additional responsibilities beyond his job description and demonstrates initiative and drive, which we truly value. Robert effectively leads and collaborates with others on a day-to-day basis to provide productivity of the division. Nicole Talantino. Nicole is part of the Community Services Division. Nicole is being nominated because she always goes above and beyond on every assignment that is given to her. Nicole has a strong work ethic and integrity. She strives to exceed expectations and is always looking to improve her performance. Whenever Nicole is given a task, she takes pride in completing that task. She's very patient when dealing with customers in person and over the phone. Customers sometimes have unreasonable demands, and making them happy is part of the city policy, and it is not always easy, but she somehow does it gracefully and with compassion. Nicole stands out from the rest of our city staff because she maintains a positive attitude whenever faced with challenging situations. She's dependable and always gets the job done with a smile. Can we give our nominees a round of hand? Council, I present to you the April Good Neighbor Award, Mr. Paul Wu. We have certificates for all of you, and if you would like, Mayor, Council, to take a picture with him?
Yes, let's take a picture. All you guys come on up here, please?
Do you want one with Mr. Wu first, and then the others?
Yeah. We'll take one with Mr. Wu first, just come on up here, sir. And then everybody else comes and joins him.
Did you guys happen to get this, Mayor?
Yep.
The presentation book? Okay, so we'll go over a few things. I was trying to have something downloaded to go over the numbers and stuff with you. One of the main, most important things that I'm sure we're going to talk about is, well, first of all, thank you, because it's been a year and a half since we've been together. We've been growing as Telehealth Vans. We now have Telehealth Voice as well, which is a 24/7 crisis hotline, Mayor. But it really started because you kind of gave us the idea of, you're the first city we've ever had. So we've been able to kind of build things out, grow from you, get your nodes. You've been patient with us to build, so I appreciate that. Because we're taking care of a lot of the county because of you, so I appreciate that. On another note, in terms of the chronically ill homeless side, I think BHS, did I say Dulce here? No? I think they gave the numbers to her in regards to the chronically ill, which are in Hawthorne. I think it's only about 21, which was from January to April. The numbers that we were looking for, and it's not reflecting to this yet, we'll dive into this, it'll take 60 seconds. But I know that that's one of your chief priorities, is the chronically homeless and things like that, helping them on the streets and things like that. But the support that we've been giving a lot is to Dulce, but also to what you're going to see in the book called B-Scenes, which is really just, we're acting as also just resources for the local connected behavioral health services with the community and things like that. So in terms of numbers, Mayor, the main number is 21, which is from January to April of this month, this year. And when you look at the book, just to kind of glance through it, and I'm sure you're going to look at it more in depth later, the first page just kind of shows you how the new screens look since we started. You can kind of see the first page in front of the FedEx building, where it makes it easier now for your residents to walk to the side of the vans versus getting inside, Mayor. So now we can park at your targets, et cetera, and can simply help anyone who walks to the side versus them being in an actual session. It's like an ice cream truck, right? So that's what you're looking at there, is that can walk up, get immediate services real quick, and go on without giving us their data and information. But we can hopefully put out some potential fires in the city. The second is information, where it says BHS plus Hawthorne. I just gave you the 21, that's the top number that we were waiting for. The reason we don't get a lot of that, Mayor, is because it's confidential information between BHS and your homeless director and all of that. We're going to create a new program where we can start tallying up the numbers more. But from a confidential standpoint, we usually stand off. But we're going to work on that to give you more numbers that you're needing. But below that, the drive-around numbers is kind of a pretty impressive numbers. Drive-around numbers in detail, when you read it later, Mayor, is more so just talking about if we're at DMV, if we're around the city, if we're at Target, et cetera, with them walking up needing just general information to try to keep them, hopefully, from becoming unhoused. The complexes is a new idea that actually we were sharing with Von, the city manager who kind of came up with an idea of us extending, you know, becoming more resourceful for people who actually have majority of your residents and your families. So it was something that we put into practice. We sent our team around, Mr. Mayor, to actual apartments themselves, asking the managers and the owners of the buildings themselves. And the apartment started to sign up with if their residents have mental challenges or illnesses, they can call the van, which can go sit at their apartment building. They can go downstairs and walk up to the van, and hopefully we can take some pressure off of the police. Just to, while we're with you during those eight hours, just another way to utilize the service when the park's not using it. So that's what you're looking at with the complexes. And then everything else is just new, Mr. Mayor, that I've just wanted to keep your best, these aren't priorities to you, but just to let you know, these are things that we implemented in your city, that we are now, for example, the disposable headphones, makes it easy now for when they walk up, keeping the conversation private. They each get their own headphones to have the private conversation. If it's, one of the big things right now, too, has been insurance. So we've been able to put on Covered California, which of course wouldn't be in the data, but the Covered California meets them to help them with their medical insurance. And one of the last, of course, we do now your every Mondays, your coffee with the community that we do in your Memorial Park Center. That's what we do every Monday. We sponsor it, we support Dulce and her team on resources and things like that on Mondays. So thank you all so far, but I'm open for any questions, any outreach, anything that we can do to strengthen things or fix things. You always give us some good suggestions.
Are there any questions from the?
To the chair. I'll take a couple of questions. I'm actually really impressed that you've implemented some other services because, you know, we don't often think about apartment complexes with families and mental health, right? We tend to kind of like see it out in the public versus trying to get in front of it first. So I'm really impressed to see that, you know, partnering with apartment complex housing in general, just to see some of the needs of some of the folks that maybe otherwise wouldn't be, you know, sought, let alone reached out to. So that's a great, that's a great new program, and I like that. And then to implement the new screens outside the van where, you know, we're seeing pictures at the bottom here that actually show individuals coming up and talking into the screens, which you have providers on the other end. What kind of, what kind of providers are right now you're seeing most needed?
Oh, that's a good question. So on one of your pages at the very bottom, we actually put, it's usually a question you ask us, so we wanted to be ready. So if you look at the data overview at the very bottom, the top areas of concerns that we've been seeing over the last few months since we met last is the complaints and support related to unhoused neighbors. That's been one of the top ones, where we get the people who walk to the vans, and they're really venting about people in the neighborhood. So we're becoming kind of a go-to when it comes to people in the neighborhood. That's one of the main complaints that we've been getting. The, I don't want to say complaints, but that's one of the biggest conversations that we've been having with people coming to the van. And they don't do it in a sense of complaining. They really do it in a sense of, could we help them? You know, so we're getting the residents coming to us saying, could we help someone on their corner, or their cousins going through something? They usually now just walk to the van. People are finding that phone lines like 988 or 211, the wait time's too long, or things like that. So they've been enjoying walking to the van, and it's feeling like they have someone to talk to.
And you mentioned Covered California, a very popular program. It assures that folks that are, that don't have insurance could sign up for insurance and immediately start receiving services. Has that really spiked?
That's been a huge one. Yeah, the Covered Calif, we don't know what they do after they get it, but if they did, we actually get more people asking for the Covered California when they're not at the park. So if we're at like DMV, or if we're at Target, or some of the other, or in front of the grocery stores, we get more people asking about insurances there. And I think they do it because they probably think we're a clinic first, and so that's one of the questions. But we just happen to have Covered California as a virtual partner, so they hop on the screen, it can help them fill out their information, and we print usually from the vans, and they take their information on. So it's, when it goes past that, you know, we don't know what happens, but we do know that they utilize that a lot more in the community than they do at the parks.
No, I just want to say thank you. From the very beginning, I saw the potential on what Telehealth Van could do for the city of Hawthorne and the residents. And just to be resourceful and just to have wraparound services and be connected in the county and other resources that is being brought to Hawthorne is to be commended. And I say that truly because up until this point, prior to you being contracted out, we really had to seek those services. I took a lot of calls. I helped a lot of constituents. I do a lot of casework. And oftentimes, between my full-time job and my elected job, it's just good to pick up the phone and know that we have a local Hawthorne provider that can make connections for us, and that's important. So thank you so much, Rambo.
No, I appreciate it. And I honestly can't take the credit for the apartment idea. I don't know if I can give credit to Von. Can I give you credit?
That's a great idea. Great idea.
Sorry, there it is, there's the love.
Yeah, great idea.
And it was from, I was talking to him about other ways we can use it. I don't like the van sitting. So while they're sitting in, we have to, we were able to just kind of leverage them to other things around the city that could be supported to the community. And we didn't know it was going to be embraced this fast with the apartment managers being able, so now we probably have to come up with, for example, Mayor, I don't know, flyers or something that the tenants can get to know that they can contact us when we're available to go sit at the buildings. But hopefully it'll support, you know, the chief of police and et cetera without escalating issues in the families with just their mental ill family members. Any other questions for me, sir?
Through the chair.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Rambo. Yeah, this is a much improved relationship and also deliver of service, right? Again, yeah, my hat goes off to you and our city manager to come up the idea of the apartments, because we do have a lot of apartment buildings in the area called the Monita Gardens area, you know, east of Prairie. And it's definitely, access is an issue, because a lot of dams sometimes do not have that medical coverage to go to a clinic or even to go see a mental health specialist. So, and we know mental health nowadays is very important, is there is shortage of staff and shortage of medical providers. So for them to have access to the, to the Telehealth vans right there, and they got some type of mental health, you know, release or something, just to talk to somebody is important, right? Because one of the issues also in that area, and Pastor Jefferson can tell you that, is about, you know, a lot of domestic violence issues there, too. A lot of children refer to DCFS, the children. So it's good to see these vans out there, so can provide them with some information, how to access more resources from different departments. So this is very good. So keep that connection and also expand the resources, right? To build relationship, like we said, the BHS with the Public Health Department and some other, the clinics that we have in Hawthorne, or even the, you know, nearby other facilities is very important. So I'm glad to see that you are expanding your resources, and yet, like you said, the televoice is very important, because people like to talk on the phone to express their concerns, and then is a way to tell them, okay, you need to go see your medical provider, or you're going to go apply for the Covered California. So thank you, and again, keep doing what you've been doing. And again, you know, sometimes I would love to see if this individual's going more than once to your vans, they're coming back for, you know, follow-up, okay?
We do, we do get a lot of those. I'll start adding that to our presentations, like the count of returns, things like that. So we'll start working. And I love the relationship that we've been building with Dulce. Like I was telling Von, I was like, she's awesome. I think when we, as Telehealth, our Telehealth team kind of started getting out the vans, when I started personally going to meet her, because she's frontline fighting, right? And I forget that she's frontline fighting. And I think once I saw her and how much she fights for the community, I went back to my office like, oh, we have to support this lady, just as an individual, because she genuinely does fight for our community, and we're all over the county, right? So to see what Dulce actually does, we were pressed. So I'm hoping to, and honestly, with you, you're the one who originally gave us the idea about teaming with BHS. That's been able to kind of take a lot of pressure off of us and our therapists and teams, teaming with someone like a BHS to be on the screen. So that, just like with Von and with, and just actually bringing us to the city, we embrace those type of ideas, especially implementing ideas that's not coming back asking you for money, right? Let's utilize the time that we have, what can we do, where can we slide it in, things like that, with not asking for funds. So we've never asked you for raises or anything, we've been trying to use what we have. The apartments are the same thing, within those hours, if Dulce's not using a van, let's go make sure these apartments are taken care of. So we embrace new ideas from your city, because you're making us better.
Yeah, and there is some other organizations such as, you know, Richstone Family Center, right? Provide also counseling and some other after-school programs. So they have resources there that you guys can partner with. The lady that does domestic violence, what's the name of it?
Maloney?
Yeah, Ms. Maloney. Justice something.
New Star Justice Center?
Yeah, New Star Justice Center. So there is, even Pastor Jefferson.
I'll email you, like you did last time. Send me who you want us to go meet, and we'll go meet with them and see how we can.
Because it's good to collaborate, because more you get involved in these, all these other collaborations, the other partners, you can provide even more service to the community that's benefit to all.
Yeah, our goal, and I know we're ending, but our goal as a Telehealth Van partner is there's going to be the chronically ill on corners. We know, we go drive by them a lot, we sit as much as we can with them. They've been doing it for a while, so they're more comfortable with it. And then they're the ones we're trying to avoid from becoming unhoused in your streets, right? So those are like, we call them the lower hanging fruits. Before they fall off, what support can we give them, you know, before they fall? And then the ones going above, right? So those are the ones we're trying to catch right now. So every time we do have time, we make sure the ones on the street, the chronically ill could see us, but then we make sure we're trying to catch the ones before they're falling into your community.
Prevention, yeah, to prevent them to fall into the unhoused, so that's very important. So yeah, that's what we need, because we, right now, you know, we're trying to get those unhoused to be housed, right? And we don't want to be at more. So it's very important to prevent them to become unhoused, so that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I guess now it's my turn. No, no, no. Look, I just really want to get to the, your data page.
Okay.
The fourth or fifth page. So when you say drive around B-Scenes, a quarter being like two and a half, three months, right? You say 34. What does that mean? What do those 34 numbers mean? How could you characterize that?
34 is the amount of times the, how many people actually walked up to the van. That's data that we can actually track, because they came up to the van itself, it wasn't to a therapist. Meaning for, the difference, the difference is, when we're parking at a, when we're parking at your park, for example, when they walk up to the van, the person on the screen is the therapist. So we don't really collect the data, we're over six feet away. So they're going from your trailer, for example, to the session, and then they're leaving.
Yeah, but you said, so we don't collect the data, so we don't, that's not part of the 34, right?
Yes, so that's, that's more of the data that would go directly to, let's say, if you see Dulce's report. Now the 34, right, so the 34, go with me, the 34 is not that data. You wanted us to park at the park, that's why I was giving you that information. The 34 is, instead of the van sitting, if we have another van that's available, we'll have drive through your Hawthorne community, still doing what we call B-Scenes. B-Scenes is when we're sitting at your DMVs, when you kind of are seeing us in the community, those we consider B-Scenes. That's us not wasting time with another van.
All right, I got you, that's fine. No, I, I got you, like at the spot. So a B-Scene would be once a day? Would it be two times a day, different location?
As, as often as, as often as we can get out, you know, I mean, honestly, it's like four or five times a day.
Okay.
It's, you know, and then if Dulce needs the other van to come, we'll come right back. So we really just go through, your B-Scenes, Mr. Mayor, are probably also what's going to be going to your new apartment idea, right? Servicing them, that would be your B-Scenes.
And the confidential information with BHS, with the, you're saying, once they're seeing therapists, so that's made available to them. What does that, why can't we get that information? What does that, why can't we get the that information in general terms without specifics about what they're being seen, just numbers wise as to how much, how many times they access the therapist?
Well, we had it from January to, well, number one, from Janu- starting January is when we were told we were going to start having to present those numbers. So we've never asked a clinic. It's like asking a doctor, give us the confirmation of how many people you saw. Legally, we never, well, it's not a, it's not something common. It's 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 from a HIPAA standpoint, you don't supposed to get how many people they saw or what you saw.
Okay. Well, if you could look at that.
But we we did, we did find a solution. We did find a solution. I'm just saying that's traditional, right? We did find a solution though. What we found was when they're leaving from your homeless office and they're going to the van, that's a private session. We don't go back to the therapist and say, you know, et cetera. What we found, what we can do instead to, because I knew you'd probably start asking for the numbers, was.
This guy right here.
Data was, we came up with a system where when they leave, when they leave the homeless office, when they leave your office, they'd be given a telehealth meeting card. And that is what we can collect to start keeping up with the numbers for you, what they're going to the van for, to give you the data that you're looking for.
Can you please look into it further with Dulce, Von, just so that we can maybe just, we just want to see how many people this is impacting, okay?
You got it.
All right. Are we good?
We're good. I guess for me, I'd like to see like, you know, how many therapists, you know?
Yeah, I think when we have the card, that's going to give us that transparency. Because by the time they get to the van, we can't get it anymore.
Got it.
So we know we can get it from your space to the van.
Thank you.
That's it? You always give me really good questions to make sure I can go.
Well, you're like, you're, you're, we're all good, man.
All right. Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Deon.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Madam Clerk, the guidelines for oral communications, please?
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954 dot three, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the council, the City Council, from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the City Manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. City Clerk. Mr. Daniel Granados, Hawthorne Library. I think we mentioned, hey, we wanted you to give us a little scoop, the scoop as to what's going on over there.
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Daniel Granados, manager of Hawthorne Library, part of LA County Library. Some good news to announce from Washington DC this morning. LA County Library was awarded the 2023 National Medal for Museum and Library Services. This is from the Institute of Museum and Library Services and is the most prestigious award in the nation for museums and libraries. So congratulations to all my colleagues and staff. Thank you.
Do we get any money with that?
It's a good question. No cash award with it, but I think the publicity may may help in that regard. So a reminder for folks at home that there are two LA County Libraries in the city of Hawthorne. The Hawthorne Library here across the street behind the Marriott Hotel and the Wiseburn Library off of 135th Street and Isis Avenue. Hawthorne Library is open Tuesday through Saturday. Wiseburn Library is open Monday through Friday. So we have the six days covered there. Congratulations to Hawthorne fifth grader Farhin Bolat, who was honored by Supervisor Holly Mitchell as a winner for the second district in the 43rd Annual LA County Library Bookmark Contest. I did bring a bookmark for each of you. I'll give you those when I'm finished. LA County Department of Public Health has been hosting free vaccine clinics at the library once a month. The next clinic is June 22nd from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. Free COVID vaccines and flu shots will be available for anyone ages six months and up. No insurance required. In collaboration with LA County ISD's Delete the Divide Initiative, Hawthorne Library will be hosting a new digital assistant. This individual will provide in-person assistance for enrollment in the Affordable Connectivity Program, that's federal program, for low-cost home internet and internet-ready devices. With summer coming up, the library's Summer Discovery Program begins June 1st and runs through August 13th. All ages can participate to read books and complete activities over the summer. In honor of Juneteenth, Hawthorne Library's Teen Book Club will read the award-winning novel Day of Tears by Julius Lester. The Teen Book Club will meet Thursday, June 29th at 4:00 PM to discuss the novel. In case you haven't heard or seen the advertisements around town, I saw them at a bus stop down the street here. The library offers laptop and hotspot kits, internet hotspot kits for checkout that provide free internet service with a Chromebook laptop for borrowers to use. We'll actually be receiving nineteen more of those kits on June 1st. Those are available to anyone with a library card. And thank you to city staff for inviting us to participate in some city events like the Earth Day Service Provider Fair last month. We always look forward to participating in those events as we can. So these updates are just really scratching the surface of what the library provides. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Granados.
Thank you.
Glad to hear that you're back in in operation. And I'm glad to hear you guys are not collecting library late due finds. So I'd be in trouble.
What, three years?
No, I'm talking about like.
During COVID, three years.
Well, from thirty-five to forty years ago, stuff, that's what I'm talking about.
Ooh.
I used to go to the back where they used to have all the little World War II books in the back. Remember, like right on the backside?
Yeah, all the way in that the back room.
And they had like Bigfoot books. Oh, my God.
If you do have any overdue books at home, there's no late fees, so just bring them back.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay, I'm not afraid anymore.
You gave yourself away.
Gordon Migo? Gordon Michael Migo?
Hello, everyone. Gordon Michael Migo, native and resident of Hawthorne since October the eighth, nineteen fifty-two. The people of the United States and especially in California love the convenience of motor vehicles for traveling varying distances to many locations out of necessity or just an enjoyable outing. By the year 2035, individuals in our state want to prohibit prohibit the sale of new gasoline-powered vehicles. The choices of consumers would be limited to new electric-powered vehicles that are not exactly affordable to many individuals and families. The current designs of electric-powered vehicles lack a high-average alternator onboard, that is, the vehicle, that will provide a hundred percent of the needed energy to operate the vehicle without the downtime of charging. As a result, the people who use vehicles would be trading a gasoline station fuel pump hose for an electric charge station power cable. The battery packs for the electric vehicles are enormous. With an onboard alternator, the number of batteries can be reduced in, you know, size and number. And they are very expensive for replacement, in the thousands of dollars, mind you, since they require cobalt, lithium, and other costly items which are bought from China and other parts of the world rather than in the United States. In the city of Los Angeles, we are dealing with an environmental impact of the XI Battery Recycling Plant, and it's been in the newspapers recently again. That would, this is now imagine the multitude of batteries that would be recycled from electric vehicles as compared to gasoline ones. As a result of the energy policies of federal, state, and local governments, the electric power supply and the transmission networks in the state of California are barely able to provide the current needs for residents, businesses, and other entities who are occasionally subject to brownouts and blackouts. The electric power infrastructure would need to be upgraded in order to accommodate the increased usage of electricity in homes, businesses, and so forth. Unfortunately, it would be an expensive and a burden for consumers at a time when the cost of living is rising at a significant level. Our government officials, business executives, community leaders, and other people in the state of California need to use common sense approach for improving the quality of life of the people in Hawthorne and elsewhere during the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you. John L. Jefferson?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember Andrew English and Alex Montero and the city officials. I want to thank the count, this council for responding to my request regarding the speed bumps, but I come back with another big. Wilton Place to 115th Street, they still are making their way from St. Andrew Place on the LA County side all the way down. And one individual found very hard hit as he ran across the speed bump and his car hit the ground pretty hard. But we still have the need between Wilton Place and 115th and Darling Love between 100, Cimarron and Haas. They still need speed bumps over there. So I'm asking the council, please add those bumps from 115th and Wilton Place to Cimarron, Darling Love, Cimarron to Haas. If we can do that, I'd appreciate that. The children would appreciate that. The neighbors would appreciate them. Also want to thank the city attorney for allowing Dail Air Community Development Corporation, our motherhood and fatherhood program, to partner with his office as we focus on domestic violence and the diversion program that he wants to implement. And so we are working together. We want you to know that all the evidence, the classes are all evidence-based and also culturally-based. So we're able to help families to relate to what they need to do in this work. And I want to say also thank you to Paul. He left, but him and his team helped me. I've been a whole year trying to get my plans through building the safety and they got it done in a few weeks. After I met with Paul, it was done in a few weeks. They did a great job. I want to thank you for that. And also, I want to let you all know that we appreciate the work that is being done in this community and we are still present here and we are still ready and willing to make as big as impact as we possibly can. We're also going to be working with the city on the tiny house, providing food and meals for the the tiny houses that are over there. So we are serving strong and mighty. Thank you all so much. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your feedback and report. Let's see. Derek Beck. Homeless in North Hawthorne.
Hello, Council. Thanks for having me. I'm Derek Beck. I'm in North Hawthorne. I'm in the, what I call the forgotten piece of Hawthorne, which is the piece north of the 105. So we're sort of segregated, unfortunately. And we have a desperate homeless situation. It's gotten very much out of control. We've been here, living here since 2014, and I've never seen it as bad as it has in the last few months. And in an hour sitting outside, I'll see four to five people, new faces, going into the Dominguez Channel feeder from 116th into the Dominguez Channel towards the highway and airport direction. And we have fighters. So when I drove over here today, I smelled smoke, as I do almost every day. It's smoke emanating out of the storm drains. Some days it's just a thin gray amount. Some days it's just a whiff. Some days it's billowing black smoke. The fighter department has come multiple times. People are calling. They say they can't do anything. The homeless are literally burning trash under my house, under our street. We're living on top of a trash incinerator. The the recently, a couple of days ago, we had a guy, homeless guy, that is a known person to Hawthorne Police Department, who is very, has mental challenges. I also think he uses some sort of drugs because he's very like acts intoxicated and stuff on the street. And he tried to cry him over our wall the other day. And he has often been seen being aggressive to our neighbors, throwing stuff into the street, throwing bricks in front of cars, which I've picked up. And 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 then he goes and slips into the ravine, that ditch area. So I sent an email to a number of people on the council with photos demonstrating what I'm talking about. And and essentially, this is the worst I've ever seen it, and there needs to be action. I mentioned in the email, I'm in the military and I've been in for twenty-four years, so I'm a man of action. I also provided some solutions on things that the city can do. I understand the jurisdiction issues and that part of this problem is with the county and Caltrans. I understand all that. So but the greatest, this is probably one of the greatest concentrations, if not the, in in Hawthorne. And the, essentially, there, I provided some ideas in terms of environmental design to displace them. For example, they put tents where they do, but jagged rocks in those places would prevent them from putting tents in those places. But I know that doesn't solve the problem ultimately. But at the end of the day, there are, the county is not doing its part. The problem is transiting through Hawthorne. So I'm here tonight asking for the city to help me basically fight the county to take care of this problem. And so there are jurisdictions aside, there's essentially, I think, if, so for one thing, I talked to the police and was told that the county reports that they do a sweep every week. I can tell you that does not happen. So holding the county accountable is one thing, dumping in front of that space. I call the trash company almost every week to clean up the dumping. There's a sign there with a California penal code saying, no dumping. Nobody's enforcing that. The county is basically trading.
Sorry, sir, your time is up.
So there are legal opportunities here. And and so I I just need help. And if it takes it, the city suing the county, there's there's some way to make this happen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. City Manager, can you look up the days and times where they have the county supervisors' meetings, make that information available to our resident so that they can also present this argument to them? If that, this hasn't been presented to them directly, then it would be difficult, it would be difficult for us and not, wouldn't make sense for us to take action against them if this hasn't been presented to them. Okay, whether privately from the individual and then maybe we could take a larger role. I would like to see that first, though. Thank you. But I will talk, I'll talk about it in my conclusion, conclusionary notes. Martha Castillo, six-foot sign on Inglewood Avenue. Yeah, we'll translate for her if she needs translation. She needs to do what she needs to do. So she can, just so she can continue and I'll translate periodically. Go ahead. No se oye nada?
Buenas noches. Me llamo Martha Castillo. Yo quería pedirle que si me pueden ayudar a poner este el sign de que no más de seis pies, porque es difícil salir por la, a la Inglewood Avenue donde están las casas. Es muy difícil ver cuando quiere sacar uno el carro para afuera, no se mira. Y ahí la velocidad es muy, van muy recio los carros.
He's talking, she wants to see if we could put a, no, restrictions on on cars that are taller than six foot. So she's seen these around. She wants to see them. And entre qué calle, qué parte de Inglewood Avenue?
Está en las casas que están enfrente del Parque Eucaliptus, en la 120 y la Broadway.
Okay.
En medio de las casas. Es muy difícil porque los carros pasan muy rápido y las escuelas todas entran a las ocho de la mañana. Ya ya cambia los horarios, así que no se puede.
All right. So le voy a dar, el, que es el director de Public Works, Akbar, Selena, Akbar. Okay, I'm referring her over to Akbar and Public Works so she could describe the problem to them a little bit closer and and we can see engineering-wise if it's allowable. Okay?
Sí.
Hable con él.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Dolores Ramos.
Good afternoon. My name is Dolores Ramos. I'm here today to make you aware of a horrific incident that happened to me two weeks ago at Church of the Rock, 12950 Prairie Avenue. Long story short, I was cursed out by a so-called deacon. He wasn't a deacon, in my opinion. He was more of a demon. He began referring to me as the B word once off turf properties. He was going to beat the expletive out of me, continued lunging at me in front of other people waiting at a, a food handout. He called Hawthorne PD on me. Once Hawthorne PD showed up, I dealt with the one I spoke with, I don't know if it was G. Gomez or E. Penrasa. Whichever one, what was overweight, that was the overpaid security guard that I dealt with. Long story short, I was informed if I showed up at the church property, I would be arrested for trespassing. Question is, how did the black deacon be ignored for cursing and threatening my life? On uh, five eighteen of twenty-three, I attended an event at Memorial Park. I thought I'd get a better response from the chief of police. I was gravely mistaken. First, he wasn't at all, he wasn't at the event to hear complaints. Um, he remembered me from complaining about two of his officers and people waiting to see him. In other words, he was a big I and I was a little U, as in unimportant. Former chief of police, Chief Fager, never would have been that rude like him. Chief Fager embraced all cultures as if they were one. I will never waste my time with the so-called chief of police, his overpaid security guards. But don't get me wrong, there are a few, like Watch Commander Sanchez, and I met one uh, Christian. But other than that, the rest of them, they seem to follow chief of police lead. But I understand at this so-called church, the incident that we're living in the last few days. And what I was initially told after the fact was that unless the blackmail said, "I'm gonna take a knife and I'm gonna stab you to death," no report can be made. So in other words, wait to be stabbed, wait to be killed, and then we'll do something. That's not right. So who, who's, so who, who can follow with that? I thought of going to the chief of police. That didn't do me any good.
We'll have someone of the officers or someone take a report, discuss this with you.
Oh, I did a report.
If you would like to, there's one behind you and we'll witness that he's uh, meeting with you. Okay? Thank you, ma'am. Sorry to hear that this happened to you. Thank you. Alright. Okay, anybody else wishing to address the city council? Please form a line. Uh, please form a line so that we have an idea as to how many people are going to speak. Just a moment, don't start yet. Alright, go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, council, my name's Burnett, Larry Burnett. Been here probably five times. Last time I was here, you said you was gonna put a memo out in regards to the parking. Coming out my driveway, there's a blind spot. Uh, Ms. Angie Reyes English, she spoke on safety. Mr. Alex spoke on prevention. Here's a prevention matter, here's a safety matter. I don't know what more to do. I come in here, I, I don't wanna make my fight against you and I or a council member, but it's a concern of mine. It's a public concern. I'm a taxpaying citizen. It's a safety concern. I'm doing everything that I'm supposed to be doing. Should I put a business suit on to come in here? I can't change my skin. I can't change, I'm doing everything that I'm supposed to be doing. I'm asking for some, some solution, a solution before it be a casualty. I got a son, I got grandkids. We come out the driveway a couple of times a day. Take them to school, going to work, coming from work. I have uh, tenants there, they coming out the driveway. There's a blind spot. It, I'm, I'm not make, fostering this. Do whatever it takes. It's right around the corner. Check it out. Uh, mayor, you looked me in my eye, it's right up here and told me you'll write a memo. What, what will it take? Should I, as the young ladies just said, somebody gonna have to lose their life, somebody gonna have to get rear-end? You, you, you delegated the chief of police. I send him an email. I left him a voicemail. No response. It, it, I'm, I'm, I'm rightfully so frustrated a bit, you know? I have confidence in the city. I'm coming to the, the meetings or the city hall. What do you suggest before something happen? It's a, it's a public concern. It's a safety concern. Let's prevent something. Let's work as a team. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vaughn, uh, chief, has information relates to Mr. Burnett? Or not yet? Okay, thank you. Next person, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Lee Manning, Jr. Excuse me. Um, I used to stay at forty-two oh seven.
A little bit louder, please, sir, so we can hear you.
I used to stay at forty-two oh seven West Els, at Gannon Street. And um, I noticed some suspicious activity going on in the building. So I did my own personal investigation and I was correct. It was some individuals that would move proportional to my movement in the room. You can hear apparatuses um, going off. If I go to this side of the room, they'll go to their side. If I go to this side, they'll go to that side. Back and forth. Went on for months. So finally, I set it up to where I off-timed it. Caught them. They were wearing orange vests. Uh, it was one white male and one Mexican Latina uh, female. And they had pumping apparatus and some type of devices in their hands, so they started running. They were real scared. So I couldn't get to them fast enough. I was trying to get a good look at them. So by the time I reached them, they were outside in their vehicle. They jumped in and skirted off. So the manager, he said, um, "Are you serious?" And he didn't believe me. So when he rewinded the footage, he seen exactly what I stated. That was in twenty fifteen. Um, now I'm experiencing the same thing in two different locations, two different buildings. So my suggestion would be, could I contact the building inspector or the building people who came out? Hawthorne P.D. has been contacted a few times and they kinda like write it off as a civil issue. But these are really WMDs that these people are dealing with. And I've written the uh, Director of the FBI, Christopher Ray, and I know he's got a lot of things going on. And we're trying to stop this tyranny, whoever it may be. So my suggestion would be to um, have building inspectors say, you know, we may need to redesign these buildings so we can gather up what type of elements out of the hundred and sixteen periodic, uh, elements on the periodic table and find out, okay, if the air or the oxygen in the room is not exactly like this, then um, maybe give a signal to the fire department. Uh, the gas company came out, they experienced burnt eyes, um, different uh, nose infections and things of that nature. So I just wanna suggest maybe they should redesign the buildings so we can catch these uh, criminals.
Thank you. If you could, Mr. City Manager, could you get us information so that we could make, uh, get the information to the proper authorities? Sir, if you could come up here, the city manager will give you something to fill out so that we can make sure that we contact the proper authorities to support you. Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Graziel Hernandez, and I am having the same issues that Mr. Beck. I live right next to the Dominguez um, channel and I, there's people jumping and to eat my house, cause I live right next to the fence and I see people walking back and forth. A lot of homeless, a lot of trash. In fact, the fence has been cut open several times. And I have contacted L.A. um, tra- um, the Caltrans, I even called Hawthorne here last week, see if they can get it fixed. But it's an ongoing problem, you know? It is a safety issue. And it is concerning because there is a lot of people going back and forth, jumping from the fence into our driveway. And it's just, it's a safety issue. And basically, you know, I am, I'm afraid.
Do you know each other?
No.
Well, now you know each other. And uh, I think uh, look, I, I don't wanna, you know, go ahead. We understand.
Like this gentleman said, I'm just, you know, I'm asking for help.
Okay, well, we need you to, we need the county supervisors to hear this from you. We need you to uh, let them know that this is an issue. Uh, because they will take it a bit more serious if they hear from you. So if we can find out the days of those meetings so that we can have a group of residents, because they easily wanna throw, pass the buck on to us, when it's really their jurisdiction and it's really is. So um, they need to hear from you guys and we'll gladly support you after that. Do you know what I'm saying, sir? It's not, it's not that we don't wanna help. We just, they just need to hear from you guys. They, they really do. They come and then they're all smiles here, but you know. We good? Alright. And let's just get that information. Make sure we touch base and connect, please. Make uh, whoever is affected by this, make sure they're part of this group, okay? Alright, Mr. Sanchez.
Hi, Ruben Sanchez, President of the North Hawthorne Community Association. Um, I'm glad you're speaking to some of the neighbors that has been a growing concern for, for at least a couple of years now. Um, I'm glad you're giving some sort of directive to that. Uh, there are multiple names out there. Obviously, a lot of them don't wanna come, they're shy or can't think the language or so. Yeah, but yeah, but you can't be doing that, Mr. Vargas, because you live in the vicinity. So you can go indoor and knock just the same way that, as I do, Ms. Lili Fernandez does and our board members. There's no excuse for that. Okay, so.
Well, we're here now and we're gonna put you together. And uh, I don't wanna take away.
That's why we're here for, man.
I don't wanna take away from your time, Mr. Sanchez. I will respond in the proper moment today.
Okay, great. So uh, we have follow-up pictures if you want as well. We have other addresses and names uh, to add to that list. But one thing we did find um, interesting that a coincidence was that we were having these fluctuations of waves of uh, vagrants coming in through the channels, through the freeways on certain days. And most of all the day, same thing we had, uh, we had made the, the same look at what our businesses. Um, these waves were coming in during the time that the city hall was giving out free food. You know, so now that becomes a concern. That becomes a concern. I'm not saying it's done purposely, but we have to be looking into these things. You know, because we do have like, uh, the offices of Dulce, they're more than happy to help and support out there when it comes to free food. And um, I'm just saying, I'm trying to talk a little fast, cause I do wanna touch a little bit on the telehealth van. Um, it's funny that none of you asked how much has been spent on this telehealth van. And all of you are acting as if there's a doctor inside the van. Or is it some kind of uh, um, medical or they're getting some kind of prescriptions? They're giving out free brochures, okay? They're giving out phone numbers. We have spent hundreds and thousands of dollars on this telehealth van just to give out brochures. Instead of giving hundreds and thousands of dollars to our senior center, our youth center? No, we're giving out to some band that's moving around, passing out brochures. And to compare them to Richstone, that is very, very disrespectful. Not gonna mention names, you guys heard who've mentioned Richstone. I know Richstone. Richstone do have doctors. They do have psychologists. They have trained staff on the premises. Are, why aren't you giving out a hundred thousands of dollars to the Richstone? Hey, maybe buy a van for Dulce to go give out the same brochures. These are business sense that you guys are not making. You know, none of you asked any questions. What is it exactly that you're doing? Why? Because you know the answer. You're giving out brochures. So everyone listen. What, over three hundred thousand at least minimum have been spent on brochures, advertising, passing it around on the city? Is it worth it? Now they're trying to get apartments involved? No, we, we have our own resources. We don't need middle people, okay? My time's up. You guys need to wake up, man. And you wanna call yourself a charter city. Yeah, right.
Next person, pe- uh, please.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, um, I have a, a complaint. This is a personal complaint and I need help. My, that is my wife right here. So uh, my apartment, they keep uh, increasing my rent and uh, um, I, a lot of stuff in my apartment, I can't be able to use any, like, I have a, like, what would I call it? Um, back, my backtop is not, is, my, my backtop is not working. My heater is not working. Everything in the apartment not, not, not is working. So, and they keep increasing my money, my rent. So I need help. That, I can't be able to pay that money without them fixing those, those stuff in my apartment. So I need, I need, I need your help, sir.
Mr. Mr. City Manager, can you get that information? Do we have a sheet with that information here? It'd be good to have that handy. So maybe somebody be, could print it out, get a copy of that and give it to the gentleman of the uh, the resource guide.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. And I think it's a, has all the information on there. Yeah. Sorry to hear that, sir. Okay, anybody else wishing to speak and address the council? Okay, if not, uh, we'll continue with the rest of the meeting. Oral communications is closed, so ordered. Mr. Mr. City Manager, real quick, I know it's, it's early on. I should've waited till later, but since the residents are here, let's come up with some type of plan on what we need to do to contact, to get the County of Los Angeles in gear on this, please. Okay? They keep ignoring this. And uh, it's just, I hear it over here on this part of the Dominguez Channel and I hear it over there near Botter Park as well. Okay? So there's some inactivity on their part. I'll talk more about it later. Alright. Madam Clerk, the consent calendar for your department, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have four items on the consent calendar. They are items five through eight for your consideration and approval. Item five, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item six, city treasurers request, request approval of warrants for May two thousand twenty-three to twenty-two thousand twenty-three? May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, sorry. Item seven, resolution number eight four one five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, state of California, adopting the vehicle miles traveled thresholds of significance for purposes of analyzing transportation impacts under the California Environmental Quality Act. Item eight, resolution eight four one six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, recognizing the month of April, two thousand twenty-three as child abuse prevention month in Hawthorne for adoption.
I make a motion.
Second.
Please, please vote. Uh, who made the second, who are we gonna give the second to?
Let me say Angie.
Okay, please vote, guys.
The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Mr. Beck, did you give the information to the city manager as well? So can you just put that together, uh, Mr. City Manager? And then you can bring other people who are affected too to that list. Okay?
That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have a bid opening. Madam Clerk, item nine, please.
Now is the time in place to declare publicly received bids for Betty Ainsworth Gymnasium Roof Replacement Project, project two three dash zero three. Public Works Department declaration of publication filed. There were no bids received for project two three dash zero three.
Can you proceed with the second bid opening, please? Uh, but there was no uh, action to be taken for the, uh, nine. Was that correct?
No bids. No bids.
No bid. Oh, there were no bids. It's just no bids. Okay. We don't have to accept anything then. Item ten, please.
Item ten, now is the time in place to declare publicly received sealed bids for City of Hawthorne Own Building Roof Rehabilitation Project, project two three dash zero six. Public Works Department declaration of publication filed. There was one bid received accompanied by bidder's bond. The price is as follows. Best Contractor Services, one million, four hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred eighty dollars.
Uh, we'll accept, I would like to make a motion to refer to staff for studying recommendation, please.
Second.
Please vote.
Voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, um, city, city clerk, we need your help on this one, too. City manager's consent calendar, can, the, the agenda reflects that you have one item on the city manager's consent calendar. Madam Clerk, can you proceed by introducing item eleven into the record?
Item eleven, approval of an administering agency, state master agreement and program supplemental agreement. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve item eleven?
Move. Second, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Next, we have the elected officials' reports and recommendations. We will begin with our city treasurer. Ma'am?
I have nothing. Sorry.
Thank you. Uh, the city clerk?
I wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's really nice to see so many people here and staying so late. Uh, we really enjoy having you all here. Uh, wanted to just give you guys a few updates. Uh, last week I attended uh, training or actually- I wanted to just give you guys a few updates, uh last week I attended uh training, or actually a conference, a clerk conference, International Clerk Conference. Uh and we um had a really good time and we also did a lot of things with um with technology. And one of the things you'll see on the door is a QR code, so if you come in at any time and you'd like to access the agenda from your phone, you can scan the QR codes, I put one right here on the, next to the box here and also on the front door and I'll probably put one on outside as well. Uh so I'd like to start implementing that and have you all use it and please feel free to call my office and let me know if it works for you. Uh that's it for me.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Again, and good evening, everyone, uh thank you for residents for coming and those at home. Before I go to good stuff, I, I'm going to address Mister Ruben Sanchez. It's too bad that he have left, see, this the kind of things that he does, he comes and throws stone at us and then he doesn't listen the facts, he doesn't listen the real truth. So for you guys that wants to deal with the homeless there, don't follow Ruben Sanchez's advice, okay? Uh because let me tell you something, okay, because we, this council, we were trying to put some tiny homes on North Hawthorne, on one eleven and Hawthorne Boulevard, right there on the Caltrans land adjacent to the one oh five. And where they know the people goes through the Dominguez Channel to, to the four, to one oh five and then they jump up to the, we're there. So we were collaborating with Caltrans, with LA County, border supervisor and the City of Hawthorne to do the project. But we got so much bad publicity from people in North Hawthorne that didn't want those tiny homes in their area. So now I would advise all of you that lived in North Hawthorne, especially on that one oh five Dominguez Channel and also one eleven, to go look at those tiny homes at Simmons and a hundred thirty-first street. A state of the art tiny homes for the homeless. And there, we only able to put twelve instead of thirty. Because we could have take thirty people out of the street, out of that Dominguez Channel and put them on those tiny homes. But we were stopped by people like Miss Ruben Sanchez. Okay? So we will do anything possible to clean up that Dominguez Channel, because that is our job as an elected official. And we would have to go back to Caltrans, go back to county supervisor to build relationship that was damaged before. Because people keep throwing stones on these of public official and of course when we called, they don't answer our phones. Because people, you know, treat them like dirt. And these are people, the civic citizens, that got elected to deliver some job, some resources to the community. But when, when people comes and attack us and call us name, call us Steve, call us corrupt or even go to the yell at the border supervisor, you're not gonna get results. And the other thing that Mister Ruben Sanchez mentioned, I said to Mister Rambo from Telehealth, to collaborate with Ridgestone. Collaborate is not compare, so maybe you need to go back to school and learn new English again.
Went to Hawthorne School District.
Well, that's. So the thing is, listen what we say, is to collaborate to provide more additional resources to our community. And Telehealth, the reason they're there, when they pass brochure, talk to the people, is because the people needs to get access to regular care or preventive care. And those are the way equal to teach them how to get access to those medical facility or the mental health resources or even to to get a food and also to get mental health, because that's the most important thing that we see in the street. Because most of these homeless people have mental health issues, have drunken alcohol issues, so if we don't clean them up, they will not become a productive citizen. So we need to give them mental health, healthcare, job training and make me make sure that they're going to go back and get a job and become productive citizen. So the other thing, let me give you a clear example. Homeless individual do not come to get food on Friday. And that I can guarantee you, I have statistics to show you. Because the homeless people, they do not come get the food because they don't have place to cook the food. Because I've been giving food for twenty-five years in this city. And the homeless people, they'll tell me, don't give me fresh product or anything else, give me canned food. So the food that we giving on Friday is for the needy people that live in this neighborhood. It's not the homeless coming from other place to come food here. So get your facts straight, because I'm tired of your ignorance. And then I'm going to the good stuff.
Let's hear the good stuff, let's hear the good stuff.
Alright, so again, on May fifteen, uh we went to the tiny home to see uh people moving in, homeless people moving in into those tiny homes. How they know select their little tiny homes and we hope those are going to be temporary, a transition. And that is where we're gonna give them all the medical healthcare, we're gonna give them job training, we're gonna teach them a trade. Be a mechanic, be an electrician, be a plumber. Those are the jobs that we don't call China or, or Indonesia for, for those jobs. We need to teach them how to be productive citizen and that's the way we're gonna get rid of homeless from our streets. And so they move in and that was beautiful. Again, on May eighteen, we did the K-nine dinner, thank you, Mister Mohammed, he's my new treasure for the, for Hawthorne President's Council. Thank you for the community, thank you for the sponsor, we, so far we have raised fifteen thousand dollar for our K-nine unit, so thank you and applause for all the people that donate money. Again, on May eighteen, in the morning, at in Torrance, uh we went to uh Medal of Valor. So we got our, I think it was sixty-eight office chief, oh, seven office from Hawthorne School District. It was only twelve, but Hawthorne had seven. They received the Medal of Valor, okay? So those kind of things of our Hawthorne PD is saving lives. Again, you know, my head goes to the chief and for the police department, because we have one of the great police departments in the nation. And it shows up on last week when they received those seven medals. So again, thank you for your work. And today, again, uh we, we did a groundbreaking right here on Hawthorne Boulevard and a hundred twenty. And we're gonna do some, some uh projects, some uh traffic projects. So we got like, for example, we're going to improve all our traffic signals from a hundred twenty uh all the way to Prairie, right? Hawthorne Boulevard, you know, uh between uh all the way to one sixteen to Imperial. We're gonna improve traffic signals on Imperial Highway, we're going to try to slow down traffic. Especially we know one twenty and, and Imperial Highway, people flew back there, cars driving at fifty miles an hour, especially during the rush hour. So we're going to put new lighting system and cameras and improve the sidewalks, put more ADA. So it was a great victory this morning and guess what? Our staff, Public Works, our City Manager, writing grants to LA County, Measure R, Measure C. Those are the things that you guys vote, you know, dollar, your tax dollar, work. So we brought seven million dollar to Hawthorne for that project. So we did the grand open today and that is going to be complete by December. So again, it's to protect our citizen, to protect our children that crossing these streets every day. And we know we saw a traffic incident on El Segundo recently. So that's kind of thing that we're looking for our city to be improving, like I told, you know, we have a good City Manager. Every single department, Public Works has been doing outstanding job, bringing us millions of dollar to improve our streets. But nobody come on here and say thank you for those beautiful jobs, only criticize for little things. Again, congratulations to uh Paul, Paul Who for the building and safety, for the, for the uh award of Employee of the Month. And congratulations to all those uh that were nominated. Uh just keep in mind that we are trying to do best we can for our city. And believe it or not, I went to uh a conference called the Contract Cities Association, was about eighty cities uh over there and they would talk about public safety at about, you know, the fire department, the police, the sheriff. And the City of Beverly Hills have a project that is outstanding, that is actually saving residents money and also the fire department and the City of Beverly Hill itself. Instead of them driving people to emergency room, when somebody call the fire department because somebody is having a bellyache or something, they send a nurse practitioner with the fire department. And that nurse practitioner evaluate the situation and instead of them taking that patient to ER, that's gonna cost, you know, thousands of dollar. That nurse practitioner would diagnose what that person is suffering, so instead of go to ER, they might send that patient, that patient to the urgent care. Or say, okay, here's a, here's a pill tomorrow morning, go see your, your medical provider. So it's saving the city money, because then they don't pay, you know, the older calls, because you know, nine-one-one calls, they keep, you know, basically they charge us for those nine-one-one calls. And to transport people to ER. So those are the kind of things, innovative ideas that we need to learn when we go to this conference. Like the chief have a medical doctor. It will be easier for us to say maybe something to think about it, for us to get a nurse practitioner to work with the doctor at the police department and with our fire department to diminish the cost of our nine-one-one system. Because we pay millions of dollars, nine-one-one team every year. So that's kind of things to think about it. Alright, so I'm almost done, Mister Mayor. Uh just to uh von reiterate what the Pastor Jefferson said, to look at more speed humps on Wilton and one fifteen, Darlene Love, one sixteen street, please. Because that's all around somewhere in school and we know also they're having uh traffic issues over there. Just to remind, on June tw- seventeen, we're gonna have Juneteenth at the Holly Park. So we're gonna have, you know, uh food, music, jumpers, et cetera, et cetera, so uh just bring your families from eleven AM to three PM. Uh so it's the celebrate the Juneteenth on, on Saturday, June twenty-seventh. And just sit, Mister Mayor, and uh good meeting, thank you.
Mayor Proton? Can you use English?
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um let me first look at my notes, since I was trying to follow all the good stuff happening. Uh SB seven forty-three, I think it's very important that the residents understand that. Uh I know it's a way of evaluating traffic in our city. We are well aware that our city is growing and we're doing our best to keep up with the um traffic issues. However, uh I want to see if maybe we could get a little pamphlet or something that we could put out front in the lobby area so that when we have these types of discussions and they're needing or wanting more information, um it could give a detailed uh information on SB seven forty-three or other um efforts that we're making to um help our city, especially the groundbreaking that we did at a hundred and twentieth today. Thank you for, for reminding me of that. Um and these are um obviously measure, measure monies that are voted on by the residents of Hawthorne and ultimately benefits the community at, at large. Um for some that don't know and might be first timers here, um a lot of the council members have full-time jobs. Uh it's difficult at times to come out and do ground breakings and things that are happening um in real time. So there are colleagues that are able to participate and be there uh to do those grand openings and um ground breakings, you know, and so I just want to thank you for, for being there and representing the council as a whole. Um I also want to recognize all the employees that were here today in recognition of good neighbor. Uh congratulations to all of you. Um there was Oscar, there was Alma, there was Paul that received the, the award and there was also Robert uh with Public Works and then Nicole. All of you are good neighbors and we commend you for the work that you're doing here in the city and thank you for all that you do. Um I also want to um speak a little bit on the presentations that were made today, not only SB seven forty-three, but also Telehealth. Telehealth has been very beneficial to us since the beginning. Uh it's brought product to us that otherwise we would not know about. Uh it's opened up our minds on how we address the needs of the community, especially mental illness. Uh something that has been growing and rapid, not just in our city, but in the City of Los Angeles in general and California. Um it's been funded through recovery dollars, COVID recovery dollars, it does not come from the general fund. So again, a lot of these services and programs that are being offered, including our Bridge of Hope Housing that provides shelter to the unhoused community, is also funded through recovery dollars. Um I want to commend the library um for coming out, LA County, and providing um some good stuff happening. I'm interested in the June twenty-ninth Day of Tears book and I hope to be there so I could hear um the discussion at the library on that and I invite the community to participate as well. Congratulations to Councilmember Montero, uh the K-nine dinner was a success, from what I understand and thank you too. And congratulate Chief, our Chief of Police for the work that you are doing and especially for the Medal of Valor and all the officers that were recognized recently, thank you so much for all your hard work. Um I also want to um uh let's see, talk a little bit about um some of the issues that were discussed today on uh homeless and um LA County doing their part to be responsible. And it's my hope, um in my years of working for the City of Los Angeles, managing casework that I do there and here, that um we work one-on-one with the field deputies that are assigned to us in the area so that we could address these concerns. And, and to um City Manager, we, we need to have a discussion with our chief, uh excuse me, our field deputy for LA County and have her um perhaps watch uh the video from today with the, the community addressing the concerns from the channel. Uh we all have jurisdictions, I understand that everybody is responsible for their share. And um oftentimes the City of Hawthorne is doing most of the lifting. And so I recognize that um there is an urgency, but at some point we need to let those individuals that are responsible do their part. That includes jurisdictions from LA County, um LA County's office, which is the supervisor's office. Uh anything having to do with Caltrans issue, that's Caltrans uh freeways off, off-ramps, on-ramps, any uh overgrown vegetation, anything having to do with Caltrans having to clean that up. And then we have Metro, Metro's responsible for all the bus stops, all the trash and debris, the shelters, the bus benches, anything having to do with um Metro. So every, again, everybody has their jurisdictions and I'm not trying to take away from passing the buck, that's not what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to give understanding so that folks understand um the predic- predicaments that we've been under for the last several years in the city. I've lived here forty years and I'm sure I understand what I'm talking about. Um I also want to just commend Pastor um Gary for being here today, thank you for, for opening us up in prayer, Pastor Greg. Uh excuse me, and then also I want to talk a little bit about um the, you know, recent opening of our unhoused community Bridge of Hope Housing. Just this week, we had individuals moved in and it's my understanding that I, we're just about full, from what I, from what I gather. And it is, it is um something that we're gonna continue to strive to, to build out another community Bridge of Housing because the need is great. This is a pilot project, it's just for three years, we're very fortunate to have the dollars to build out a community such as this because it's greatly needed. We wish we could have had more because obviously we could have been taken in more. But because we're in the predicament that we're in again, um I'm just grateful to know that we have a Bridge of Hope Housing once and for all installed that we've been working on as a council collectively for the last three years to see it happen. And we're here today and very fortunate to have it. There are, let's see. There are yet council appointments that need to be made to committees and commissions. there are yet council appointments that need to be made to committees and commissions. I want to bring those to the agenda. And please provide to the council those openings that are available so that council members are finally appointed by the mayor or council members wishing to sit on those committees. So please bring that back to the council for the next council meeting. It might not be in July, but the end of July, the first week of July, but the second meeting in July. I want to commend the city for providing doggy bags. If you have pets, you're walking your pets, please pick up your mess.
Yes.
That's what they're there for. They're green in color or black. Do your part. Pick it up, throw it away, please. I see it each and every day where I live, which is right across the street from Costco on Prairie in York. Pets are often walked along the railroad. And because they feel it's just, you know, rock and a railroad, that they don't have to pick it up. And I make sure to let them know, please pick it up. I also want to thank the city clerk for your efforts that you're making to provide food to those in need. This past Friday, I was here, I witnessed what was going on. Thank you for that. You do the packing on Friday and then the distribution on Saturday, which is perfect because all the volunteers are here, they're interns, they're students, they're trying to make their way. And this is a great experience for them. And this is a mentorship that I think will last with them for a long time. And thank you for what you're doing there and how you're helping the community. On Saturday, June 17, at noon, the Juneteenth event, I want to be there. However, I'm also being honored at the Carson Civic Center. I am being given a Doctorate of Divinity for my professional elected work of 30 years. So I'm very honored to be receiving that from Bible Believers College and Seminary. And so I welcome anyone that'd like to attend and participate to please come out. That's at the Carson Civic Center on June 17. And then after around 4:30, 5 o'clock, there's gonna be a dinner at the Hawthorne Memorial Center. There's about 60 graduates that's gonna be receiving their degrees. With that, I want to thank our Traffic Bureau, Chief of Police, and those that worked hard to address the Turo Avenue tee parking concern. Not just this concern, but the city concern across the board. The tee parking has been an effort that we have been working on here on the council collectively to ensure that folks that are parking on the street are staying in their lane. And what I mean by that is no more sharing, no more putting up cones, no more putting out garbage cans thinking that you could save a spot for your resident. We implemented a pilot project of tee parking just to see how it would work. It was very successful, folks liked it. Folks were actually paying 20 bucks to have it done. We, at the end of the day, say, "Nope, keep your money, the city's gonna do it, and we're gonna do it across the board." And it's working. And so thank you to all of you who have done that. Thank you for the report. I hope at the end of the day, that this issue is laid to bed. But thank you so much. And then there's lots of events that are happening that we listed and talked about. Friday, the 26th, Movies in the Park, the Memorial Center, June 3. I'll let you get yours. And then there's a Dodger Team Picture Day on the 3rd at Sports Center. There's another Dodger Day at Holly Park, the Juneteenth event on the 17th. Good Neighbor Game Day on the 23rd through the 25th. Again, a movie in the park on the 23rd of June, a Summit Park program begins. And then there's the Toll Tree Drive. There's a toll tree drive that we're gonna make sure that our Bridge of Housing community receives the toll trees that we're collecting as a community as a whole. There is three drop-off stations, one at the police station, one here at City Hall, and one at the Memorial Center. What we're doing is just providing simple things that we might take for granted, such as shampoo, bar soap, toothpaste, toothbrush, aftershave lotion, Kleenex disposal wipes, dental floss, deodorant, socks, et cetera. And since they have a washing machine and dryer at the Bridge of Hope Housing, perhaps some detergent and some things that they could use to wash their clothes. Again, the city is striving very hard, very hard, to bring resources. And if anyone tells you otherwise, I want you to call me. I really do. Because way too often, we're not addressing the good that we're trying to make here in Hawthorne and that we're striving and doing. And it's time that we just address all of that and ultimately just, you know, know that there are communities in the city of Hawthorne, there are neighborhood councils in the city of Hawthorne with other agendas. So having said that, I thank you for you being here, who have never been here or have attended. And then I thank you for those that always attend and always know what we're doing here in Hawthorne and how we could better collaborate and do better. So thank you again, City Manager, City Attorney, thank you staff for what you're doing. And thank you, Public Works, because we see exactly what you're doing out there with regards to all the repairs and things that you're making along our streets and fairways. So with that, I'm gonna leave tomorrow to go visit my family in New Orleans. I want to acknowledge my brother who's visiting from Idaho. Say hi, brother. Where I'm from, and this is his first time here in nearly 30 years. And this is my, I haven't seen him in two years. So yeah, so good to have him here and good to see, you know, have him here so that he could see what I'm passionate about and what I truly am for. And I'm for city of Hawthorne, and that's my goal. Thank you.
You proud of your sister? All right, right on, man. Awesome. Any go-bags? Nothing? That's it? All right. We'll find out. All right. I want to congratulate all the participants in the fireworks lottery that we had today. We have three of the veterans groups that have been grandfathered in and three other additional groups that got locations as well. And one of the biggest concerns previously was that the nonprofit groups weren't making a buck. You know, that they spent so much time, because they have to buy and front the money to get the fireworks up front. So if they don't sell them, right? You know, is that, am I correct in saying that? Just a real brief, just help me out on that.
No, no, the fireworks products you pay afterward, but everything else you have to get.
Yeah, so that's where the money gets, they have to front the money to be able to set up, get the license, get the, you know, the permits, insurance, and all these things. So at some point, at some point, probably eight, nine years ago, we noticed that they were complaining because they want to make a thousand bucks, 2,000. And it wasn't really worth their while. So hopefully, everything's working out where the nonprofits are able to make something to help their groups out. Hopefully, that has changed. So congratulations to our Medal of Valor recipients. Want to congratulate them very much, give them a big hug and congratulatory, you know, high five from my behalf, Chief, if you can let them know. We definitely, if you guys don't know this, the South Bay has a Medal of Valor. Everybody gets awarded for acts of bravery. When, if you look at the program, every year, there's awardees from different parts of the South Bay. But Hawthorne is always the one that has the most recipients. Always, consistently, it never fails, right, Chief? Always, always. So, you know, we have a great, awesome group of men and women that serve the community. So kudos to them. I want to give a directive to our City Manager. Everybody's all like, "What's the directive?" Like, "What's it gonna come up with?" You know, all crazy. No, it's very simple. If you could try to find the money, I think the Assembly Member gave some money to refurbish the community center. But if you could use some of that money or some money to just reupholster the four billiard tables that are in the senior center, the residents, I mean, the seniors that are there have been asking for that, and they want to see that done up. So we just want to give them a good professional experience there with their billiard tables and maybe look at the cues and all the other, the cue sticks and everything else so that they could, you know, when they aim at the ball, it's gonna go straight, it's not gonna go crooked, right? We want to make sure that everything's nice and flat, balanced out, tweaked out, everything. Calibrated. I like that word, thank you. What else? So yeah, hopefully, we'll put that issue to rest. And I actually appreciate that everything you kind of went through was right on point. The tee parking was thought as a solution to this whole parking issue that we had. Okay, so some people aren't happy, but they got these big old monstrosities of RVs out there that they want to park, you know? You know, there's certain regulations that don't allow for these things to be parked in the street to begin with. So people have been getting away with certain things. So this just brings it up to the forefront and up to the bubbling up, right? And it's our attempt to be able to help the community, be able to solve that. So let's go ahead and enforce that. And that, we need to make sure that those people that are outside of the bounds of the tee parking are sighted, okay? You know, we got people that like consistently are parking their big old oversized vans, oversized trucks that don't fit in those parking, parking in those spots and thinking that they're always gonna argue their way through this, you know, with, through me, through the chief, through the parking people. Just, you don't fit there, find a spot where you fit, and problem solved. And if it's in front of your house, ask us to realign it, make maybe eliminate, whatever we can do to fix that parking spot size and make sure that your car fits, if it's directly in front. Because there's some say, I don't want to say anything right now, I was gonna say something, but don't say it, right? The standard, we can't change anything, right? So it's, so this has been verified and this is legal and it's already set. So just make sure you guys comply. All right. I want to announce the Jumper Fest event. Came up with that idea, so I thought, we put an event together. So all families are invited on June 3. Councilmember Montero and Mayor Proton, you guys are invited to go into the jumpers with me. So make sure you're there. It's gonna be a lot of fun. I want you in the jumper valve by myself, Montero. No, we're gonna do the sumo suit one. Isn't there sumo suit, the thing where they blow us up and then we? Nah, just kidding. All in good fun, guys, we tease each other, you know. But it's gonna be fun, family-filled event, 11 to 3 on June 3. Okay? So make sure you bring your families, pass on the information. Okay, so this is one that we talked about today. And we're talking about the homeless, the unhoused, people who are within our community. And Hawthorne is not the only city that's affected. You got all these cities over here, like, "Wow, and in Torrance, they don't have this, and Hermosa Beach, and Redondo Beach, oh my God." You know, BS, they have their situations too over there. You know, once you go like, when you go to Redondo Beach Pier to the pier, there's certain streets where it's all these encampments that are in place. You know what I'm talking about, right? The street, I forgot which one it was, like Redondo Beach Harbor Boulevard, or whatever it is. So all the areas have their issues. So I know we talked about the emphasis, I think in our conversation today, I did mention, I wanted to give a different twist on it. It's been, how do we help the homeless, those that are unhoused? Find somewhere to stay. You know, how do we help them with telehealth? How do we help them by getting back to work? How do we help them with these tiny homes, getting them, you know, this help? And that's good, that's fine and dandy. And Hawthorne is a pioneering city when it comes to that stuff. Okay, guys? We're doing our part, and other cities are looking to Hawthorne to be able to mimic what we do. So kudos to the council that's been brave enough to be able to take those steps, okay? But there's something that, for me personally, if I conflict with anybody up here or whatever, is that when we have homeless or unhoused that are jumping fences, exposing themselves to children, threatening people, physically assaulting people, loitering, vandalizing, that takes precedence for me over anything else. The protection of our community members, people who have bought houses here, who are renters, who have decided to live in the city of Hawthorne, their personal, your personal safety is my priority over anything else. And I think that that does not, that can't be taken out of the conversation. You know, all this other stuff is fine and dandy. Hey, there's an element of people out there that refuse services. And that's a sizable amount of people that are out there that we're trying to help. They refuse, "I don't want to, I'm cool with what I have." Can't force them. So I want to come up with some type of conversation with the council members here, with our chief. I think you already hinted to it, that we need to emphasize that, everybody up here. I want to force that conversation, or we just all contribute, to be able to find out to the solution. Because at one point, guys, the state was saying, "You can't do this, you can't touch them, you can't do this, you can't tell them what to do, you can't do this, blah, blah, blah." Well, now we have all these different things. We have like the tiny homes, we have the telehealth van, we have the homeless to work program that are there to help. And if they refuse first services, then I think we have a, we have a strong, more of a reason that we can enforce other types of protections for our community, right?
We can only hold them for 72 hours in jail.
But whatever the limitations, we need to find out what they are. But we need to get them off the streets if they're about to hurt somebody or if they have hurt somebody. And that's the bottom line. And whoever wants to come in. Because the quality of life for Hawthorne residents who have chosen to do things here in the city is very important. So we just need to find that. So, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Police Chief, I'm already worked up already, City Attorney, and amongst the three of you, you just, let's start like outlining something, some plan, some strategy, and so we could prioritize this. We've done already good in these other areas, I think we need to just focus on that. The bottom line, that's the truth, right? All right? So, thank you, okay, and then also, thank you, guys. And then also, I want to commend all of my colleagues up here, city treasurer, city clerk, individuals up here who have been on committees and representing the city, taking the time and fulfilling your roles, educating yourself or going and representing as you should be to the different groups that we have going, all right? I've done it through Naleo and maybe a couple of other things, through the City Selection Committee. You've done it through the organizations here, Clean Power Alliance, Contract Cities, the training. Training, training over there, so sanitation, thank you very much for that one, okay? All right, so, South Bay Cog.
911 system.
And you guys got a note, so if you don't see some of us up there, it's just that we have our day jobs. We have to, you know, we're working council members too, but that's how we pay the bills. We only get a stipend, right? So you guys want to give us only a stipend, so that's where we're at. We have to work and pay our bills. Okay? Is there anything further from council members, staff, elected officials? Okay? This meeting is adjourned at 8:07. Thank you, guys.